Okay, I will call this meeting to order at 4:30. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting tonight will begin around 7:00 PM. Item B, public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Seeing none in the boardroom, Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
All right, seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Okay, I will reconvene us to open session. It's 7:12. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Sidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, esta es una reunión de la Junta de Educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación en español. Para poder acceder al canal de interpretación, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono del globo terráqueo. Hagan clic allí y elijan el idioma Spanish o español. Si ustedes están accediendo a Zoom a través de su teléfono móvil, van a ver tres puntitos y dice "more" o más en la pantalla de Zoom, y al hacer clic allí van a poder acceder a los servicios de interpretación. Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you. Can we please start with a attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez? I'm sorry, Student Board Member McGrath?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Coram, present, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And then, thank you all for joining us tonight at our NVUSD Board meeting. We're on to item E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Riser, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Yes. Report on Closed Session Items, D1, Student Discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED Code 35146 and 48912.20, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078 and the Family Rights and the Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G. Student Matters. Item D1A, Expulsions. There are two cases. So, we do the roll call?
Yeah, we gotta do...
The board recommends the expulsion for student 10122023A. Move to approve. Second?
All right, I have a first by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote on this matter?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And item D1A2, the board recommends the expulsion for student 10122023B. Move to approve. Second?
A first by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote again?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude the report?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, that concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to E2, Flag Salute. I think we're on Student Board Member McGrath. Will you lead us tonight?
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vessel of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. We're now on E3, Announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Item E4, Approval of the Agenda. I would like to move that we pull item E5D and otherwise approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay, I made the first, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Against, motion passes. All right, now we're on to E5, Approval of Minutes. E5A, this is the September 12th, 2023 minutes.
Move to approve. Second?
Okay, we have a first by trustee Chu and a second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have to have trustee Jankowicz abstain. Okay, I think the motion still passes though. All right, and then we'll move on to E5B, September 14th, 2023.
Move to approve. Second?
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions? Okay, trustee Jankowicz abstains. Motion passes. Then, E5C, September 26th, 2023. I'll move to approve it.
Second?
First by myself, second by trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, trustees Chu and Riser abstain. Motion passes. And then we pulled the E5D, so we'll move on to E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Macedi, do we have any visitors in attendance?
We do. Oops, I'm sorry. We do, thank you very much, President Gracia. We do have our president from NVEA this evening, Deb St. Clair. Ms. St. Clair, would you like to address the board? Not necessary this evening. And then, we have no visitors online tonight, but I do want to welcome the Vintage High School AP Government Class. Thank you so much for being here in the boardroom with us this evening.
Okay, we'll move on then. Recognition of Students of the Month, this is item F. Item F1, Valley Oak High School. Will Principal Cisneros please present the Students of the Month for Valley Oak High School?
Good evening, everyone. It will be my pleasure to introduce our Students of the Month. Our first student is Alejandro Mesa Vargas. He is here this evening with us. Alejandro is just an incredible young man, such special young, so kind and caring, helps his peers with patience and kindness. He's respectful and helpful to many of the students in his class. He's just a gentle soul, as your teachers describe him. He's very unassuming, and when I told him he was the student of the month, he was excited and asked me why. And I said, "It's all the wonderful things that you do on our campus, the work you do around the garden." I know that he helped Julie. And so he's going to share a little bit about his experience in the school district in Valley Oak and also what his future plans are. So I'm going to turn it over to Alejandro. Congratulations, since we're very honored to have you as our September student of the month from Valley Oak.
Hello, we can hear you. Are you still there? We can't hear you. Did you mute by accident?
He's not, it doesn't look like he's muted. It looks like he's, there's trouble with the microphone on his end. Alejandro, can you hear us? Yeah, his microphone doesn't appear functioning or visible.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Alejandro. Maybe if you figure it out, we could come back to him.
Yeah, or perhaps he could try calling, potentially. Why don't we hear from the next student, Principal Cisneros?
All right, we'll go ahead and see if technology is still advanced, but at the same time, still challenging. So October's student of the month is Christopher Acosta Ramírez. He is here with us tonight on Zoom. You know, when I asked teachers about him, the teacher said, "Christopher questions everything." Christopher joined us at the beginning of this year, transferred to us, and right away, he wanted to know what he needed to do to make sure that he maintained a high GPA, wanted to know what he needed to do to make sure that he had 100% attendance, and has been truly, truly focused in those two goals since they won a value. As mentioned, he questions everything, as everyone should, right? When you're, when you're learning new things, you want to be able to really understand different perspectives and be able to make your own, you know, your own decision around whatever, you know, in knowledge base around whatever that may be. He is enthusiastic, who is eager to learn, expand his knowledge, and shares his findings with others. He is fun to have around, has a great sense of humor, and he's still mannered. He's a student who knows the difference between compost, recycling, and trash, a kid who enjoys popping popcorn and will, you know, get the machine ready for the next, next time around for the next group. He's a young man who's also kind, respectful, and responsible. He's an impressive young man and who truly enjoys math, according to Ms. Lovey. You know, he will come back and visit at Valley Oak and hopefully be, serve as an inspiration and role model for future students that come into, into Valley Oak. We know that he'll make his mark in the world. I can tell you that he's got a smile that's contagious, and so you can't, you can't do anything but smile when you're around him. So, we can't wait to see what amazing things he's going to do out there. So with my pleasure to introduce to you Christopher. Christopher, you want to unmute and share a few words?
Hello, I'm ready. Hello there. Okay, my name is Christopher Acosta. I am 17 years old. I am a senior at Valley Oak High School. I grew up in Napa, California, and I love it here. I like to go to the gym. When I am not in school, I am working squeezing as a cashier or spending time with family. I like to travel a lot of places to make a lot of memories with my mom, Sarah, my dad, Luis, my sister, Yessenia, and my pet chihuahua named Candy. My parents look Mexican because they are from a place from, named Zacatecas in Mexico. I am the youngest in the family and also like the Team Raiders for football and the Dodgers for baseball. I like making a lot of new friends, like going out with friends to have fun. I got switched to Valley Oak after my junior year. My freshman year at Vintage affected me because COVID had started and I had to do visual learning through online learning. I didn't like it because it was hard to learn. It was hard to ask questions and I wasn't able to get the same help as in-person learning. My sophomore year, it was hard to learn for me because I would get put to sit with people who I would easily get distracted by. Also, I would wake up a lot late and would start school at 8:00 AM additionally. I didn't like how I would go on vacation and would miss a lot of days of school. As a result, my junior year, I was trying my best in school. I was struggling to do well in December. I missed school an entire month as my brother passed and it affected me a lot. As a result, I missed my finals. Returning to school in January made me lose motivation. I was not trying at all. I failed all my classes for the rest of my junior year. Now that I am at Valley Oak, I want to try and stay focused in school. What I like about Valley Oak is how they help me when I get stuck on assignments, help me get caught up on credits. Feel like they teach me, I feel like they teach students super well. What I like a lot about Valley Oak is they help me get prepared for college on what works best for me and how I get scholarships for college. I feel like Valley Oak is a super great school with super nice teachers and friends. I feel super welcome to Valley Oak on how teachers, counselors, and students are super nice. I want to graduate from Valley Oak as soon as possible. I strive to get into college. I am planning to attend Napa Valley College to look into joining the trades for machine tool tech or being a welder. I also have three friends who are taking and pass welding school. I heard it's a very good paying job and super fun to work at. I am hoping everything goes great if I decide on being a welder or a mechanic tool tech, so that way I can try to be successful in life. I want to thank the board and Napa Valley Education Foundation, Valley Oak, for this recognition. I am super grateful to be in it. This will make my family proud and really make me want to keep doing great school and keep achieving these rewards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any chance that Alejandro was able to figure out his technical issues?
Alejandro, can you hear us and unmute?
Yeah, I don't know why you kicked me out.
Wonder if I do want to... Do you want to start your speech? Welcome back.
Yeah. What was the speech? Yes, sure. All right, so, I would like to say thank you to my parents for always being supportive and making sure I finish my work. And I would like to thank the board and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for recognizing my work. I've gone to MBLA, Harvest, Napa High, and has recently Valley Oak High. And I got to where I am now by working hard and having nice and supportive teachers who wanted me to succeed. I had many challenges throughout my school years, including time management, but I worked hard to improve so that I could graduate and become a better person. Some community service that I've done was helping out Julie in the garden after school for a total of 16 hours. And after high school, I would like to go to Napa Valley College and one day become a great construction worker. I'm very proud that I changed things around and got my grades up. And I would also like to thank my girlfriend, Jimena, for always believing in me and encouraging me to do good. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now we'll move on to F2, Napa Valley Independent Studies. Again, Principal Cisneros, please present the Students of the Month.
Thank you so much. It appears that both of the students were not able to attend. I do not know exactly what happened, but they both wanted to thank the board and the education foundation for this recognition. And I will be, I will present their, their awards when they come over to their weekly class time on our campus. So thank you again on behalf of the students.
Do you want to just give us their names quickly so that everybody knows who it is?
Yeah, yeah. So for September, the month, we have Tabitha Harrington. And then for October is Bianca McIntyre.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We will now move on to item G, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Riser, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comment on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
All right, thank you for that. Seeing that we have no comment cards, there are no public comment in the boardroom. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment online?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you. That makes that easy. We'll move on to item H, Reports. Board of Education and Student Board Representative, Student Board Member McGrath, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, yes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome Vintage High AP GO students, and congratulations to our Students of the Month. I went to elementary, middle school, and high school with Alejandro, so that was really cool to see him up there. Currently, currently at Napa High, our Napa High School Avid is participating in the Napa Valley Can Do Food Project. So throughout our campus, Avid students have taken the initiative to enter various classrooms, deliver announcements, and provide green bags, encouraging our fellow students to contribute non-perishable food items. This collaborative effort not only reinforces our commitment to community service, but also strengthens the connection between our schools and the broader community. And overall, it's been very positive on campus. Also, our school is actively pursuing the addition of two new student representatives to join our school site council, Collaborative Assembly comprising their parents, staff, and students. I was extremely excited to see this announcement in our school newsletter as it underscores the perpetual importance of student voice and representation. Already, I've engaged in conversations with several students who have expressed interest in these roles, and I'm very excited to see what they will do. Now I have some, some news from our Student Board Member Alternate, who I reached out to, Mistura. And she shared with me some news from American Canyon High School. Currently, one of their new APs has taken the lead in revamping their Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Program. They currently have a committee made up of teachers, a side behavior counselor, a parent, and a student, which is Mistura. The committee met for the first time on the 27th of September, and during this meeting, they discussed what the program looked like in the past, what worked and what didn't. They looked at what the numbers are currently saying regarding behavior and discipline at their school. They then discussed the importance of student and teacher connections and why some students, why some teachers are quick to give students referrals and some aren't. Finally, their committee discussed the next steps. They've decided to bring back their positive behavior ticket, positive spelled P-A-W-S-I-T-I-V to go with their mascot. And they are currently having a school-wide competition where students submit designs and the entire school will get to vote. They plan on creating more detailed posters in classrooms to help remind students of this. And while a lot of their planning is meant to be put into play in the future, they plan on implementing the tickets during the school year. Last week was homecoming week for American Canyon and Napa High, which means it was super busy, but ultimately, very fun and community building for both schools. Finally, I would like to end my board report with an extremely positive community event that occurred this Saturday. A member of our Napa County running community, Jonathan Pasquale, put on a Backyard Ultra at Skyline Park, which was an event that was open for anyone to come and run a set course with the event ultimately serving as a fundraiser for his cancer foundation as he was diagnosed with an aggressive form of cancer. And the reason that I bring this up here is because it being a running event, Vintage and Napa High School track and cross-country runners were present at the event, and there were over 200 people present. And I just wanted to bring this up because it's always great to have community events like this that bring schools together in support of a single cause. With that, I conclude my board report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. Welcome, everybody. I actually have one of my stepsons is in your class over there, and he knows he did not come with you guys tonight. So please give him a warm regard tomorrow, or Monday. Back on September 29th, I met with Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson regarding some facilities and transportation questions that had come up from the community, and he was very helpful in taking the Avid notes on that and is working on helping me resolve some of those things so we can have a good rapport with our community leaders. Also, later on that day, I was able to tour Brown's Valley Elementary, which is our, one of our TK through eight schools, with newly hatched Principal Osborne, which was great. And it was very eye-opening to see that campus and see how they're incorporating some of the older grades. And I think that's going to be an exciting opportunity for us in the future as that continues to develop. On October 3rd, we, I attended the NCOE Board Meeting via Zoom. On the 9th, I was able to tour Willow Elementary with Principal Dunn, which is also a really cool campus. Even though I live on the backside of Willow, I'd never actually been onto that campus. And it's, it's great. It's actually not as bad as some of the rest of them. So, in terms of facilities, I give it a thumbs up. And then, last night on the 11th, I was able to attend, along with trustee Chu, the American Canyon High School Fall Choral Concert, which was very impressive. They have literally hundreds of kids involved in their, in their program there. So it was great to see the, them performing everything that they had learned so far this year. And I would, I would just like to take a moment to bring out and let everybody know that October is officially Domestic Violence Awareness Month and is signified by the color purple. Domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people, regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. One in three women and one in four men have been physically abused by an intimate partner. Millions of Americans live in daily silent fear in their own homes. In addition, every year, millions of children are exposed to domestic violence. Locally here in Napa, news saw a 20% increase in demand over this past year and served 1,800 clients. There's going to be an event coming out on October 21st that's co-hosted by the Sarah Leslie Foundation, the Monarch Justice System, and news called The Power of Purple. It's going to be down at the Oxbow Commons. It's a family-friendly event. There's going to be booths that are tabled by all the Napa Valley nonprofits to provide services associated with helping folks that are experiencing domestic violence. And I encourage everybody to take an opportunity to go down there and check it out. It's going to be a great opportunity to learn what sorts of resources out there and what kinds of things can be done in terms of prevention. It is going to be on October 21st from 12 to 4:00 PM at Oxbow Commons. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jankowicz?
Thank you, President Gracia. I tuned into Barry Martin's Morning Show on The Vine last week. It was incredible. Ms. Erin, a teacher from Silverado Middle School, her sixth-grade class created a show, "Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader?" They asked Barry and his co-host, Cara May Woolage, five questions. They got four out of five correct, but the sixth graders granted them some real latitude. It is yet another example of teacher creativity, experiential learning, and students getting the opportunity to showcase their knowledge. The next show is on Monday, October 16th, at 9:15 AM, and it will be in Espanol. I attended the Napa County Board of Education meeting as well, in person. I met with St. Alina Superintendent and his Board President, Lisa Pelosi. We discussed CSBA legislative issues, current issues that impact all districts, and general education issues. This past Friday and Saturday, I attended, along with trustee Chu and trustee Gracia, Guiding Coalition Number 1 and 2. Prospect Studios challenged us to consider what education would look like in the future, what do we need to bring with us, what is at our core, and what opportunities and challenges will present themselves in a few decades and beyond. We were given a persona and tasked with considering, given their history and experiences, what were their values, what were they motivated by, and what actions influenced them? And what influence did they want to have on the world? Education was woven into each storyline. It was great. I need to add a personal side note. One of the many benefits of these collaborative sessions is the opportunity to meet new people, and I loved both of my tables. We had a student, also named Finn, who was delightful. He was bright, well-spoken, and brought present, real-life experience to the dialogue. I learned a great deal from student voice in the room and appreciated their willingness to spend the weekend making meaningful contributions to NVUSD. And the additional bonus was, over the last four sessions, I really have had the good fortune, coincidentally, to spend a lot of time with our tech department. Wow, I have a genuine appreciation for what they do and honestly, who they are. It's great. I met with Superintendent Pittman and her Board President, Indira Lopez Jones, from Calistoga this meeting, this morning. And this meeting consisted of the same agenda as the St. Alina meeting. And in conclusion, a little shout-out to all the NVS teams that are participating in Walktober. You people are killing me. But I love the camaraderie and the competition, Mr. Michaels. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Chu?
Well, it's hard to follow that one. So on September 18th, I listened in on a talk called Unique Barriers to Success for Southeast Asian Students and Families, put on by the Asian and Pacific Islander School Board Member Association. It's really eye-opening because when we think about Asians and their experience in education, we typically think about the high-achieving, maybe the Chinese or, you know, that type, that population. But it really is very diverse. But it really is very diverse. And the issues that a lot of Southeast Asian community experience is very different. Some of them are refugees. A lot of them are low-income. And so there's a very wide range of experiences that I think, you know, through some of our DEI work, we're really trying to hone in on and just think about it more thoughtfully. So I'm really happy to be able to have listened to that from an outside perspective. And I have a recording of that I can send out to everyone here. On the 27th, I attended the California School Board Association Roadshow in the North Bay at American Canyon High School. So happy that our district can sponsor that event for board members around the North Bay. On the October 6th and 7th, I also attended the Guiding Coalition as part of our strategic visioning at New Tech High School. I also have very similar positive and very uplifting experience as Trustee Jankowitz with interacting with our community and our students there. And of course, last night, Trustee Hart and I went and listened to a wonderful ACHS choir concert. Thank you to Mr. Jamie Butler for inviting us. My favorite piece, I guess, was one where the kids were using just clapping and, you know, all these other ways of simulating rainforests in Brazil. And then they broke into songs. So I thought it was a very creative way of performing. So, and I also want to recognize October has been designated as Filipino-American History Month, and that is to commemorate the arrival of the first Filipinos who landed in what is now Morro Bay in California on October 18th, 1587. And so I just want to recognize that for my community of down in American Canyon because we have many, many Filipino-Americans here. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Reiser?
Thank you. Yes, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so I have some old notes. And I'll just say on a personal note, I appreciated the flexibility and grace that I needed to step away for a few weeks from school board-related activities, but I'm very happy to be back. On September 19th, I attended the celebration for the ACMS 25th Anniversary Celebration, which was really a nice community event down in American Canyon. The mayor and vice mayor, Garcia and Washington, were in attendance and along with my fellow board members. And it's always a really warm celebratory feeling down there. On September 20th, I was part of the second meeting of the DEI Steering Committee. And also on that day, attended the Curriculum Instruction and Student Support Board Advisory Committee meeting. And then in terms of VAPA for the district, I was sad to not be able to attend the ACHS Choir Concert last night. I let Mr. Butler know. But I was able to attend two Napa High Choir events. The Singing in the Spotlight, which was on September 24th, an annual thing in the quad where the Vocal Music Workshop hosts, and then the Napa High School Choir Fall Concert on October 5th. I'm always blown away by the quality of our district's choir performances. This particular show, there was a never-before, or the first-time-ever arranged original Native American Lakota lullaby that was sung in the original language. There was also an Indian Raja that was very fast. And they also sang in Latin. So just the way that our choir programs stretch kids' brains and capacities and bring them together in celebration of music and culture is always really moving. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Water?
Thank you, President Gracia. I missed the last meeting. I had some family business to attend to. So some of this is in the dim reaches of the past, and I am really happy you all managed to survive Band Books Week without me. You know, that shows a lot of character. Okay, I also went on a visit to Shearer School on the 15th of September with Trustee Hart, and it was, you know, wonderful. And saw a former student of mine, who is lo and behold, an eighth-grade teacher. It was, you know, it was great. And then I went to American Canyon Middle School with several of you for the 25th Anniversary. That was on the 18th. And then on the 19th, I went with Trustee Reiser and our county supervisor and our superintendent to the NorCal Carpenter's Apprentice Tour over in Fairfield. Let's see, I had my curriculum meeting on the 20th. A couple days later, I had lunch with the Cowalfoundation people, which they were delightful and do a lot of good things for us. I also attended the meeting in Yountville where the county officials discussed the tax structure of Napa County and how it applies to our schools. I filled in for Trustee Reiser to be an evaluator for the Camille Creek Golden Bell Award, which they got. I went to the California School Board Association event at American Canyon High School, and thank you for helping organize that, President Gracia. And then yesterday, I had a meeting with President Gracia and Dr. Masetti, practicing on how to be a good board president. One thing is to keep things in chronological order, which I can't do. I'm going to have to go back a little bit on. I did attend, even though I was in the wilds of West Virginia, I did attend the NCOE meeting on the 3rd and even spoke. Thank you Zoom. And I would like to congratulate all of the Visual and Performing Arts Award winners for the month, and certainly Trustee Reiser's daughter, who was recognized for her painting ability. And good job. And let's see, Grace Exum, who has spoken before us, invited me to the Wuthering Heights Napa High School Play. So it looks like I'll be going to that tomorrow night. And last night, I was unable to go to the concert because I represented the district at the synagogue. They had a special vigil last night because of the war in Israel. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. So on the 29th, I attended the Vintage High versus Justin Sienna Football Game. And then on the 30th and the 1st, I attended the CSBA Board of Directors Meeting. That was held in Sacramento. And then on the 3rd, I attended the Napa County Office of Education Meeting. The 6th was the Guiding Coalition, and then also the 7th was the Guiding Coalition. So those were all the activities that I participated in. And that concludes my report. Okay, moving on then to H2, Board Representative Reports. H2A, Special Education and Community Advisory Committee.
We have not met.
All right. H2B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
We have not met.
H2C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
Coming up on the 24th?
H2D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representative. All right. And now we'll move on to H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great, thank you, President Gracia. Good evening, NVUSD trustees and community. I'm so grateful for all of the opportunities I've been given the last two weeks to observe the progress we're making in our organization in improving education for our students and engaging with the community. Let me share about progress first. On Monday, October 2nd, our entire executive cabinet team visited Alta Heights Elementary School. It was great to get out to a school together as a senior leadership team. We observed our math and reading intervention programs and new curriculum being implemented. We observed many of our key initiatives in action as teachers focused on differentiated literacy instruction. Most importantly, it was so clear that Principal Ward and the Alta Heights staff have created a caring, inclusive community full of cariño. The campus was clean and inviting. Great job, Principal Ward and team, and go Gators. On Tuesday, October 3rd, Dr. Nemko, Napa County Office of Education Superintendent, and myself, visited Ethnic Studies classrooms at New Technology High School, Valley Oak, and Vintage High School. It was exciting to observe the units of study that were designed by last year's Ethnic Studies Committee in these pilot classes as we prepare to scale up for the graduation requirement. Thank you to Dr. Nemko for taking the time to learn about our implementation locally as she works on the Ethnic Studies Graduation Requirement Implementation at a statewide level. I also want to thank Ms. Regalia, Ms. Housley, and Mr. Stroll and their students for opening up their classrooms for these visits. The students were deeply engaged in meaningful content and reported learning a lot in one semester course thus far, just a few weeks in. So now about community engagement. I greatly appreciated the opportunity to present to the Quanis Club today about where we've been as a school district over the last few years, our current strengths and challenges, and where we're going as a school district. So thank you to the Quanis Club for the invitation to speak today. I also want to share that I had a great time spending time with the American Canyon High School community, as others did on the second night. I was there on the first night of the fall concert. Mr. Butler does such an amazing job preparing the students. I was really in awe of the amount of material the students had mastered in such a short time. It's just October. They've been in school since mid-August. And they had mastered so much material and sang it so beautifully. Just the general quality of their singing and performance capabilities were so inspiring. It was also so great to see some Measure A2 campaign volunteers before we went into the theater for the choir concert. And we reminisced, me and some of the American Canyon parents who were key lead volunteers in the Measure A2 campaign. We reminisced about how busy they were at this exact time last year working to get Measure A2 passed, which successfully passed in American Canyon. So thank you again to the voters of American Canyon for taking care of their schools. Congratulations to the NVUSD District English Learner Advisory Committee. That's our parent leadership committee for our families of multilingual learners in the district. So again, congratulations to the officers of the D-LAC for doing a fantastic job of chairing the first D-LAC meeting of the 23-24 school year last night here in the boardroom. It's been just amazing and inspiring to witness these parents develop strong leadership capabilities that will support the improvements we need to make for our multilingual learners in our schools across our system. And lastly, thank you to the approximately 80 people who participated in our Guiding Coalition. What is the Guiding Coalition? Just to be clear, I'm going to define it. The Guiding Coalition is our visioning, steering community, I'm sorry, committee, tasked with contributing ideas, perspectives, expertise, and experience that will inform the creation of the district's long-term vision through a series of three design sessions. These sessions will include explorations of the future of the Napa Valley Unified School District and the connected needs of NVUSD students, schools, and educators. This group will meet over three one-and-a-half-day meetings. The first one did take place in October, as was mentioned by some of the trustees. Will meet again in December and then February. I am so grateful we had so many internal and external stakeholders who are willing to contribute that much time to co-constructing an education vision and future for our students. And then the last thing I'd like to say is I just want to wish all the members of our team who are involved in tomorrow's district-wide professional development, our Professional Learning Day. We have, I think, well, I won't, I'll let you announce how many we have, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, because it is a record-breaker tomorrow. But much of our staff will be at American Canyon High School tomorrow, engaging in deep professional learning on how to improve the quality of education for all of our students here in the district. So we're so excited about that opportunity for all of our staff. So thank you very much for listening to my report this evening. And I am now going to hand it over to the Assistant Superintendents who will report out on the work that's happening in their respective divisions. And we'll start out with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Representative McGrath. The Human Resources Team has been actively engaging in new learning initiatives to improve our recruiting processes. Yesterday, we held the first of two classified job fairs planned for this fall here at the district office yesterday. The second one is scheduled for next Wednesday at American Canyon High School. We had 24 potential job candidates come in-person yesterday to learn more about our available openings directly from our classified department heads, our CSCE reps, and our HR staff. Technology provided Chromebooks so that our HR employees could give assistance online to the applicants with the EdJoin portal with our job application, our EdJoin platform, which is how they apply for the jobs. And we're pleased with our initial effort and are looking forward to next week's event at American Canyon High School. Fairs like this involve a lot of moving parts and cooperation. For yesterday's event, we just want to give a few thank-yous to our CSCE leaders Hector Gallegos and Jackie Clayton, our department managers Gloria Aguirre, Albert De Souza, Terry Lynn Rossetti, Kristin Teakle, Megan Hupp, and Chris Reddy, our HR team Kate Gogger, Nora Stragonig, Maria Lara, Gina De Luca, and Elizabeth Gonzalez. And we want to appreciate maintenance and custodial support from Cindy Gonzalez, Marie McMurray created some signs for us, and the setup and breakdown by Alberta Avila and Oscar Choa, Manuel Hernandez, and Alejandro Rodriguez. And thank you to Dr. Masetti too, who was present and even did a little recruiting herself. Also this month, HR sent two representatives to the CodeStack Conference in San Diego. CodeStack is the organization that oversees the maintenance and development of the aforementioned EdJoin platform. They were able to learn more about some upcoming improvements that are being made to provide greater functionality and easier use for applicants. And they also had an opportunity to make some suggestions on how to further improve the platform. Lastly, we are happy to announce that the Employee of the Year 2024 nominations process has begun. After working to align calendars and processes over the last few years, we are excited to be able to use a singular process so that any employee in any category, both certificated and classified, can be nominated at the same time. Information about the process and accompanying nomination forms are being sent out in numerous ways and are bilingual so that everyone in our NVUSD community, employees, students, parents, family, friends, coworkers, and community members will find it easy to submit their nominations this year. Nominations are due Friday, November 3rd. And also, please save the date of Tuesday, January 23rd, for our annual celebrating our outstanding employees presentation, where our 2024 Employees of the Year will be recognized in the Evans Auditorium. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And I had so much fun recruiting. So thanks for the opportunity. Next, we will hear from Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Gracia, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath, and the NVUSD community. Today, I attended the Napa Valley Adult Education Consortium, which is comprised of representatives from St. Helena Unified, Calistoga Unified, the Napa County Office of Education, and our adult ed program and Napa Valley College. The consortium provides coordinated adult education programming throughout Napa Valley that serves a critical connection for our graduates and other community members between high school and post-secondary education. Napa Valley Adult Education offers multiple career technical education pathways that align with the CT pathways in our high schools. Later tonight, you will hear a report on NVUSD's Career Technical Education Program completed by consultants from ConnectEd. The review affords us an opportunity to align and innovate our CT programming from TK to post-secondary to meet Annual Board Priority Number Four, which is focused on college and career readiness. Also today, staff members from Silverado Middle School and Napa High School, along with the NVUSD Secondary Instructional Support Services Team, engaged in their first on-track collaborative meeting of the year in Elk Grove. The team included 8th and 9th grade English and Math teachers, school counselors, and site principals. The focus is on improving outcomes for that transition between middle and high school, which is perfectly aligned to Annual Board Priority Number One. The goals for the collaborative are to decrease the 8th and 9th grade D and F rate, increase A to G course completion rates, increase students' sense of connectedness to school and school staff, and improve and increase adult collaboration on learning. The team today reviewed grade data and generated aspirational goals and then specific action plans. We look forward to generating empathy interview questions during our school site time in a couple weeks. Oh, sorry, during our NVUSD Professional Learning Day and launching those empathy interviews. and launching those empathy interviews with students to learn more about their experiences. Also, tomorrow, on the Professional Learning Day, which is going to be held down in American Canyon, we have planned over 190 sessions for almost 1,100 registered staff members. I want to thank the instructional support staff, academic specialists, and the leadership team, as well as the other departments and divisions that contributed to planning and preparing for what we hope to be is a joyful and meaningful day of learning. And finally, Jordan, if you can pull up the photo that we shared with you earlier today, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Audrey Dawkins-Chubbs, our NVUSD Expanded Learning Programs Manager, who was recently honored with the Region Four Spotlight on Quality Award. Audrey was acknowledged last Saturday at an event held at the Alameda County Office of Education, the Region Four Lead Agency. She was recognized for her exceptional collaborative leadership and systems implementation that encouraged high-quality expanded learning programs in the Napa Valley Unified School District. She has implemented systems that encourage and facilitate conversation around goals, expectations, and support through monthly partnership meetings. She communicates frequently with principals about their role in supporting programs. Audrey ensures that expanded learning staff have relevant training that corresponds with the district's strategic plan, including positive behavior and intervention support, multi-tiered systems of support training, and our ecosystem of credo. So I'd like to congratulate Audrey for being recognized. And thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, and congratulations to Ms. Chubbs. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Gracia, NVUSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath, members of the NVUSD community, the Vintage High School class of 2024, correct? Class 82 right here. It's always a pleasure to provide each of you an update with operational services. I know that's awfully old, right? You're probably going, boy, that's ancient. Here we go. Recently, the Director of Maintenance and Grounds, Albert De Souza, along with six lead workers, conducted an all-staff meeting with the entire Maintenance and Grounds Department. Highlights from the meeting included the introduction of new members. Why? Because we now almost have a full grounds department that's fully staffed, and so that was four or five extra members. We revisited the NVUSD and our own facility vision. We did a 3-2-1 opening activity. I know, instruction, you're impressed. We reviewed work order completion and closeout requirements, required safety trainings, curb appeal expectation, customer service norms, and what it means to be a steward of NVSD school sites. Finally, then, our lead workers led small breakout groups, again, I know you're impressed, to review and remind employees of other important information. So thank you, Director De Souza, for all that work. Under Custodial and Operations, Director of Operations Gloria Egwier is putting her arbiter training to good use already. She shared with the entire custodial staff and later followed up separately with the head custodians on what it means to have an inward versus an outward mindset. Director Egwier did an exceptional job explaining the difference between the two mindsets. The custodial staff paid very careful attention when Director Egwier spoke particularly about seeing others as people versus objects and how we each possess a wise sense of how we should treat or help each others. Lastly, after covering the main topics, Director Egwier then had the custodial staff personally reflect before sharing that she would be revisiting this topic on a regular basis with all the staff at future meetings. In Food Service, Director Kristin Teakle and her very dedicated staff continued to hum right along, creating, cooking, and serving very nutritious and delicious meals. An example being that earlier this week, they rolled out a new menu item, which is, I know, may not be the right time, President Gracia, of a butternut squash soup. As all of you know, the meal counts from 22-23 were extremely successful and a very ambitious benchmark was set for the 23-24 school year. I'm here to report tonight that the food service has continued to meet or exceed the 22-23 performance. For the month of August, 11,000, over 11,000 more breakfasts were served district-wide when compared to August of 2022, and over 13,000 more lunches were consumed again when compared to August 22 to August 23. So it's really doing, they're doing a great job. The NVSD Energy Task Force has made, Conservation Task Force has met, we've made up a site and district staff comprised of certificated and/or classified managers, along with our very own Student Board Representative Finn McGrath. We've met twice so far. To date, members of the task force have been engaged, thoughtful, and passionate about helping craft recommendations to conserve energy district-wide. And last Friday, October 6th, members of the task force conducted an energy audit at Napa High School. Data from this energy audit will be shared at the next task force meeting on November 3rd, but some anecdotal observations shared from the audit from the people who participated were lots of small appliances in classrooms, not many lights left on in vacant classrooms, and exterior lights left on during the day. So we have some data, some pretty good data there, and we'll have actual numbers to go with. Speaking of bringing schools together, the Maintenance and Operations staff are gearing up for a relatively small school district community event you might have heard of affectionately called Big Game. This will be the 52nd edition of this friendly rivalry football game enjoyed and celebrated by students and staff at both high schools, along with the community of Napa. Friday, October 27th is the day. Kickoff for JV game is 4:45. Varsity will start at roughly 7:00 PM. And also, Little Big Game is back this year after a brief hiatus. The freshman football game between Napa and Vintage is on Thursday, October 19th at 6:00 PM. And then I almost forgot to mention that our very own President of CSEA, Hector Gallegos, is planning a Family Fun and Car Show event this Saturday right out in front of the district office from 10 to 2:00 PM. And so we're encouraging all of you to please consider coming out and attending and showing your support for the car show and the Family Fun event that's going to be happening, all organized by Hector Gallegos and the CSEA members. So thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Great, and we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who's online tonight, who oversees the Business Services Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The Technology Department is focusing on supporting the PD Day tomorrow. The entire team will be there to support staff and teachers. Additionally, they're focusing on ongoing cybersecurity improvements along with necessary network upgrades. The Enrollment Center is putting the final touches on open enrollment. Registration for the 2024-25 school year begins on October 15th. Enrollment for the regular, for the 24-25 school year also opens on October 15th and closes on November 30th. The enrollment team will be hosting a session at the PD Day tomorrow to train all office managers and registrars for registration and open enrollment. The Data and Assessment Team is working to analyze the CASP scores, which will be available next week. This is the test that we took in the spring, and we'll share the analysis at the upcoming board meeting. Business Services is continuing to work on the 22-23 annual audit as well as prepare for the first interim reporting period, which covers July 1st through October 31st. Additionally, the open enrollment period for health benefits will conclude tomorrow, October 13th. Members from the Business Services Division are excited to be able to present on a number of topics during our professional development meeting tomorrow. We encourage everyone to come. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. President Gracia, that concludes the staff reports this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to H4, Facilities and Bond Program Update.
Thank you, President Gracia. Jordan, could you please promote or bring in Kelly Jurgensen to the presentation?
I'm here, I'm here, thank you.
Great. And do we have the slideshow also to project? Excellent, thank you. So we wanted to provide you, trustees and the community, and Superintendent Masetti with a Facilities and Bond Program update. We are going to focus on Measure A2 at this point. Could I have the next slide, please? Thank you, there we go. So today's presentation will focus on the following. We will give you some project updates on Donaldson Way Elementary School and then other A2 projects that are in progress right now, as well as provide you with an update on our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee comprised of Measure A2. Next slide, please. So those of you who participated in some of our strategic planning, you may notice the similar cowl coating of stickies there. And this is a fantastic idea to gather input. So we have put that to good use when we've met with the Donaldson Way Elementary School staff as well as their parents. We did this recently, two weeks ago, we met with staff. And then this past Tuesday, I believe it was Tuesday, I mean, it was Wednesday, we met with the parents, asking them to each give us their input on things that they would like to see included on various things within Donaldson Way, such as the multipurpose building, the library, the outdoor learning area, some improvements to parking, things like that. And so we had incredibly great meetings with both these individuals and got some amazing ideas. We're going to then be collating all this input that we received from the staff and parents, and then making sure that we can incorporate in those into our bridging documents, which is the document that we will be then distributing to the teams of individuals who will be looking and potentially being selected to oversee this project. One of the next steps, it says at the bottom, is we will be, you know, doing a qualification process for the design-build teams, which is the procurement method we're going to be using. And we're targeting a February meeting to bring you our selection for board approval, which will then put into place the next steps for the Donaldson Way Elementary School. I now will introduce Kelly Jurgensen. She's the Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services. And Van Pelt is the Bond and Program Manager that the school district has hired and has done an exceptional job guiding us through Measure H and will do the same during Measure A2. So Kelly.
Hi there, thank you. Ashley, if you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. So some of the other projects that we've been working on for the A2 bond is exterior paint at American Canyon High, which is planned for this summer, and also a pretty extensive improvement to the site at Canyon Oaks, creating outdoor learning environments and additional shade, which I know is a pretty serious need there at Canyon Oaks. And we're in the midst of planning for that project, which we are also planning to take place next summer.
I've been told it's not Jordan, it's Ashley we should be asking for for next slide. So Ashley Green, next slide, please. And I may have lost Kelly.
No, I'm here.
Okay, good.
I'm here, I was just waiting for the slide to advance.
Wonders of Zoom.
Sorry about that. So another thing we wanted to keep the community updated on is our meetings with the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We have had two meetings so far with the A2 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, which has been a pretty engaged group, and we appreciate that. So our roles and responsibilities. And then our second meeting really was sort of getting started, giving them an update on the issue and schedule, the projects we have planned. And then we made a list of topics we'd like to cover in future meetings. So this is a really great engaged group and a good subset of the community of America.
And just to chime in on that, I think one of the things that we all agree with, meaning myself, my staff I oversee, and then our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, is the importance of us doing an exceptional job with this bond program to ensure that future bonds are passed in the city of American Canyon. And I believe, you know, I feel really strongly about that. And I believe it's supported also strongly by the members on the committee as well, too, that it's, we need to do the, just the best due diligence we possibly can to make sure that we're doing, like I said, just an exceptional job executing on the projects and informing the public along the way. And I think we have a high level of congruence on that topic. So it'll hopefully be a really good experience and set this community up for future bonds, should that be a desire of that community.
All right, next slide. Unless there's any questions, that's where we're at with A2 for this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
So I did have one question. You guys mentioned Canyon Oaks, they're going to do some work there. What was the envisioned work besides the shade structure?
Yeah, so the picture wasn't an incredibly great picture. I know you really approve of all of my slides that I put up here, trustee, President Gracia. But what we're in the process of doing is there's two areas with inside the interior part of the campus that we're going to turn into outdoor learning areas. And I'm not going to go out on a limb quite yet, but I'm pretty darn excited about what I've seen so far. And I think it's going to have that wow factor that we had at American Canyon Middle School, too. So there we go.
All right, I think that's it then. We'll move on to Item I, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items or items is requested by board members. Do we have any items that need to be pulled?
Yeah, I would like to pull Item I-5A.
Okay, I-5A, any others? Can I get a motion then?
I will move to approve, second.
Okay, first by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Morales, can we please get a roll call vote on this batch of items?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Student, Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Item I-5A, FMO 06.01.2023, Maintenance Contracts. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do have a public comment, Justin Holt. Go ahead.
Okay, I mean, I am John Holt. I missed the last comment that we were talking about the H. And we had a nice guest speaker today, she came by and talked about the school. And I hope we will see the new Donaldson Way school. So good work, Mike.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any more public comment?
There is no additional public comment.
All right. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Epstein.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Vera. We'll now move on to Item J, Presentation and Discussion Items. Item J1, Instructional Services. J1A, Presentation of Career Technical Education Program Review.
Good evening again, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Student Representative McGrath, Dr. Masetti, and the NVUSD community. Tonight, Director Monica Reddy and our consultant, Rob Atterbury, from ConnectEd, will share information gathered from our Career Technical Education Program, or the review of our Career Technical Education Program. This review is the first step as part of our larger effort to align and innovate our college and career readiness programs, TK to post-secondary. I want to acknowledge and thank Director Reddy, who has served as the primary lead in this review, and Lisa Faith, our College and Career Readiness Coordinator, who has also contributed. And with that, I'm going to pass to Director Reddy, who will lead you through the presentation.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. And good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member McGrath, and Dr. Masetti. Excited to give this presentation tonight as we look to the future of college and career readiness in NVUSD. We have learned so much from all experiencing COVID. And I think one of the things that we really experience as it relates to college and career readiness for our students is many of our students, when they were online learning, were also engaging in more career readiness by being out in our workforce. And as they return to schools, that's become a priority as we look to see their flexibility and adaptability that we saw during those times and how it needs to impact our learning environments. That coupled with the fact that we are seeing staffing shortages that we've all experienced in so many different industries, and through our summer mentor program have seen our students fill some of those gaps, gain some high-quality skills and knowledge in those areas, and actually become employees. and actually become employees in our organization, has really elevated what the potential our students have in this particular area. It's always great when that aligns with the state. And so what we're seeing is the same movement around the nation. And we're seeing our State Superintendent of Schools and our Governor actually elevate that same initiative. In addition, we have a prime opportunity as we reimagine our future together and think about what that means for college and career readiness as we engage in strategic planning and center our students in that process and look at the graduate portrait and then look at how we need to fall behind that as staff and the plan that needs to support that. We have a great strategic plan right now. It's always great when those two align. And so we have had college and career readiness as a key initiative in our district and have done a pretty good job with our college aspect of that and really are starting to dive into what does that mean for career and what does that mean for alignment? A key part of this plan has been students benefiting from real world experiences. Career Tech Ed is one component of that that we have in our plan. And so as we look to close out this strategic plan and look to the future, transitioning and elevating that particular initiative will be an important part of that process. Another aspect of this review really touches on goal number five around the alignment and allocation of resources. And do they mirror priorities and goals? And so I think, as we just shared, it really does mirror our priorities and goals. And the area we needed to look at when we conducted this particular review is assessing and developing, looking at our community partners. We currently have a partner that supports career tech education that we have had for quite some times. And so looking at, is that partnership working for us? Is it benefiting our students? And will it be a benefit to us as we look to 2030, 2037 for our students? I appreciate our annual board priorities that really hone in and give us focus, and they have done so very much in this area. And so looking at innovation and alignment of career readiness programs begins with this work tonight. And we ultimately want to look at what are those student outcomes? And those student outcomes are really ensuring that when students walk into the classroom or walk into the spaces, when we talk about career tech ed, it shifts and expands our mindset around what is a classroom space where they're experiencing responsive, engaging pedagogy? And then are we ensuring that we're making gains and movement towards supporting them with college and career readiness? Those are our students here engaging in our summer mentor program in that picture. And so I think we have a great foundation and interest across our organization to successfully prepare our students for life post-secondary. And alignment of these particular initiatives between college and career will just serve us further in that area. We have multiple success indicators in this particular area. The one you'll hear about tonight is conducting an evaluation of our career readiness program and starting with CTE. You're going to get a little bit of my English teacher tonight, as I've described to so many, as a former high school principal or former middle school principal. And it would be like looking at a writing program to go schoolwide. And I would start with my English department. So as we look at career readiness, we really need to start with those who have the knowledge and expertise in this area already in our system. And that's our career tech ed programs and our career tech ed teachers and students. And so we're grateful for their participation in this process that's led through this review. Currently, just to give a brief overview on our partner, we'll go into more depth of our current program. We have 36 CTE courses across our five high schools. We have 18 different career tech ed pathways. These are two-year course sequences, those are the minimum course sequences, and that's how we define a pathway. Within that, in 2022, we had 25% of our high school students enrolled in at least one career tech ed path, career tech ed class. And of those seats available in our career tech ed programs, 80% of those seats were full. Whenever we look at career tech ed pathways and decision-making about what should be in a career tech ed pathway, we want to look to our industry sectors. And so when you look at our larger Bay Area, and you can see this is from our Bay Area Community College Consortium, which very much supports schools with career technical education in colleges. And we have some high priority industry sectors, and those are advanced manufacturing, advanced transportation and logistics, health, information and communication technologies, and public safety. Of those, you can see the three that are highlighted. Those are the high priority industries that we currently have in our schools. We also have regional priority sectors, and so about 50% of our program pathways meet those. And that is agriculture, water and environmental technologies, business and entrepreneurship, education and human development, energy construction and utilities, global trade, life sciences and retail hospitality and tourism. Again, the ones that you see highlighted are the ones we currently have in our schools. For clarity, and you'll see later on in the presentation with our partner, those do not exist at every single school site. So as you look at the 36 different offerings, these are at various different locations for schools, for our students in our schools. And to do this work, we needed to bring in an outside partner. And we are happy to partner with ConnectEd. They are a well-known, resourced entity in career technical education. They work across the nation with school districts that have various different models of career tech ed and have been doing this for a while. And we're fortunate to have two gentlemen who have been in this process with us. One is here with us tonight, and that is Rob Atterbury. He has a long history of being in the career tech ed world, all the way from being a teacher in the classroom to leading programs at the district and county level and now being a part of ConnectEd. His partner is currently at San Diego County Office of Education. He's not here with us tonight, but Al Love has been an incredible resource from the county level to help us see. He's also has district experience and has been a career tech ed student. I'll leave that for Rob, and a career tech ed teacher. So I'm pleased with our partnership, grateful to have them here tonight to give you the rest of the presentation. And they are on Zoom, so we'll see.
Great.
Rob, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay.
Well, thank you, Monica. Well, it's my pleasure, and thank you, Dr. Masetti and members of the board for allowing us this time to present some findings. It's been a great partnership with the district in doing this review. And we have three phases that were originally approved back in August. The first phase was to conduct this review of the career and technical education programs and provide you a report with strengths and suggestions for program improvement. We're also leaving behind a few tools in the process of doing that. Next slide shows the process that we used, which was to collect some data, interview district and county staff. We did site visits, met with administrators at CTE, classroom visits, student focus groups, counselor interviews, and then had a CTE teacher meeting at each campus. As Monica said, you don't change the English program without the English teacher involvement. We wanted to be sure that the CTE teachers were involved as we thought through this process. And then we modeled a facilities assessment tool and a process for that, as well as provided a teacher self-assessment that'll help meet and grow the quality of the programs over time. The next slide talks or shows the number of folks that we interviewed. You'll see there's some numbers, I won't read through all of that. But we were able to meet with 35 students. And we really wanted to put the students at the center. And the next slide kind of shows that what was reported by the students as when we asked them the question of how they learn best, and these are in the kind of the order, many, many students out of the 35, over and over again, said visually, hands-on, and having student choice and flexibility. With many more talking about students indicating that their teacher, being able to demonstrate it, helping them get a picture in their head, holding them accountable, forcing them to solve problems, and group working as a team was towards the bottom, practice. And then some students recorded, reported that they, you know, loved to have a little bit of music. And we did see that in a few classrooms where there was soft music playing in the background. But then students also reported they wanted it quiet without interruption and be able to actually dive in and get a little bit deeper without being interrupted too much. The next slide goes on to say that they were most excited about projects and choice and client work, meaning bringing a project in from outside and actually working on it for somebody else other than the teacher, having some field experiences. Many students are getting some field experiences. We'll talk a little bit more about the strategicness of that and the systematic approach to that. But even students talked about competitions and being able to compete or be a part of something where there was maybe a prize at the end or some sort of a competition in that. When students were asked about how they might improve their school, over and over again, they said they wanted more CTE classes and they wanted more time in those classes. They wanted more relevance across the content areas. They wanted to see more projects in college classes and internship opportunities for themselves. The next slide gets into, and you'll see kind of the breakdown here. But we'll talk about, sorry, I lost my order here. We'll talk about combinations and then we'll talk about some areas of concern and then some suggestions moving forward. So first of all, I have to say, overall, the CTE program that's been run by the Napa County Office of Education has been well-run and managed with attention to equipment and facilities over time. And their staff has done a wonderful job maintaining this complex program and kept the program operating despite different leadership changes inside the district. But I do think with Monica's leadership and Pat's leadership and the superintendent's leadership, I do believe that there's strong evidence of a commitment by the district to begin managing these programs a little bit tighter. The county staff has been providing funding through grant sources on behalf of the district and teachers, and the teachers do feel very well-supported. Students interviewed spoke highly of their teachers and their programs. As mentioned earlier, they want more, they want more programs. They want more time in their CTE classes. The fact that all of the CTE classes meet the University of California A through G requirements is certainly wonderful. I'm a little taken in slide nine, it talks, you know, where you see the difference between the number of completers versus those students that are completing that also have the UCAG requirements. We'd like to see those numbers come together. But 36% of the courses are meeting dual enrollment requirements. That's a, that's a high percentage compared to other districts. And I do see that, and students reported that their teachers are providing some great experiences, relevant experiences and projects. And the CTE teachers, when we, when we did have our focus group with them and presented them the idea of putting them at the center of a college and career pathway and actually having them help to drive some of the relevance into the core content area, they were very excited about that. They felt a little bit helpless in doing that and wanted a lot of support because they felt like, you know, we are outsiders. And so I think that's another sort of area where we can, we started to bring them under, under the leadership of the district. They will feel less like outsiders and have more participation on their campus professional development opportunities and be able to influence some of their colleagues with some relevant curriculum and ideas and project ideas. The counseling staff at each school, very committed to each student and tailoring their courses to stage their interests. That was certainly fantastic. The next slide talks about just some areas of growth or needs. In terms of the completers, here's, here's that slide that I was referencing. You'll notice that our completer rate, though comparable with the state, 267 students out of the roughly 5,000 students you have seems like a low percentage overall, and we'd love to see that number increase. And though it's comparable, if you look at the 9.3% or 142 students that both complete or completer and meet the UCAG, even though all those courses meet the A to G, we'd love to see that percentage come up at least to equal the 17.6. And so some attention to that is going to be necessary. Right now, the CTE programs only meet the minimum spec, which is 300 hours or about two courses and passing with a C or better. And, you know, we work with a lot of districts that have really tried to include career and technical programs at all grades so that provides students an outlet and a way to engage. And so students expressed that interest in more than two classes and their sequence and more time in those classes. So it's just something to, you know, area of growth there. But the last bullet really speaks to, with the new graduation requirements coming on, we will need to look at the ninth and 10th grade in particular and see where and how we might include those elective options. The next slide talks a little bit about the work-based learning experiences. And work-based learning, the pyramid diagram there, if you can read the small print, really is, is a kind of a growth cycle from exposure to awareness to exploration and ultimately preparation. And the top of the pyramid would literally be a career. And maybe that's post-college or even postgraduate school. But the idea of a continuum of experiences and yet a number of students are getting these experiences. We'd like to see more students have the opportunities and have that more strategic and systematic and have that spectrum of work-based learning experiences. When you look at the overall percentage of students that are actually in a career technical program, a high percentage of your students overall are not getting those experiences. And I believe it's probably the one big game changer for students to have that opportunity to be in the adult milieu and actually experience, try it on, taste it, touch it, feel it, and see if it's for them. And we have found that work-based learning experiences lead to students going to college with great purpose. They realize where they need to go and what they want to do as a result of having those experiences. As one superintendent once told me, or recently told me, he said, "Rob, the classroom of the future is probably not a classroom at all. It's probably out in our workplaces, in our community, doing both service learning opportunities and internship opportunities." So slide 20, the next slide talks about some additional areas of growth. Some better alignment to the labor market. You have a fascinating economy there locally. There's a lot of vintage culture going on and, you know, a lot of biosciences and things happening in and related to some of the agricultural programs. I think that there's an opportunity to do some greater alignment and bring in some of the, some of the new high-tech things into the career and technical areas. You're doing a great job, the county's been doing a great job in keeping up in some areas. But I do think there is some room for growth. There is some inequities in equipment and facilities and programming existing across schools or between schools. That's inherent somewhat in the, you know, the newer campus of American Canyon versus, say, Napa High School. And it's also the number of opportunities available to students, say, at Vintage High School versus Napa. But even within the programs, and I'll just pick on woodworking and construction between campuses, there was quite a big variance. And that's just one example, but by and large, the facilities are well-equipped. But, you know, we walked into one robotics program at one of the schools, and it certainly compared to some of the other programs at another campus. Though it is a high-tech field, didn't feel very high-tech. And so just those inequities are really around equipment and facilities and programming. I do think that there, and what became pretty evident is a need for better communication, coordination and budget clarity with the county office as we continue to work with them as a partner. And I think the coordination and communication will definitely need to be thought through and renewed. We also know that there's a limited number of student leadership opportunities through the state-recognized career technical student organizations or often called CTSOs. There's only one of those at Vintage High School in the Future Farmers of America. There are some other opportunities, but it is a staffing implication in terms of those teachers willing to take on an extracurricular opportunity and host a club experience and to actually take their students to competitions and things. Naviance, which is a computer program for providing students career interest assessments and interest aptitude assessments. It's also a great counseling tool. The implication of that seems varied and not fully implemented. And there's, and when counselors talk with us, they did share some concerns about the use, ease of use. And I know that the contract is coming up for renewal. As we talked to different campuses, it seemed like some campuses were really using it well. Others hadn't even begun yet. And I just think that we should look at that and see about the ease of use. There seem to be a very knowledge and utilization of dual enrollment. One campus really led the way, Vintage High School, while other campuses compared to vintage combined weren't even equal. So I think that's an area for future improvement. We didn't dig into the data too far, but I do know that National Clearinghouse data, when asked, wasn't being uh, when when asked, wasn't being used, and there are some opportunities and areas for reporting. The county does some of the reporting now, and um, I think that the district would be would benefit from having some additional um, data queries and building some of the systems into your current uh, student information systems. With some of the recommendations on the next slide, um, just increasing opportunities or offerings for students, uh, the schedule flexibility that's going to be necessary as you're declining enrollment and the new graduation requirements. You may want to look carefully at some scheduling flexibility to maybe integrate some of the ideas in some of the career and technical, maybe even work-based learning into some courses. Um, I really feel strongly that um, increasing the engagement of local business and industry, um, forming your own district advisory committee of business and industry, especially as you're building out the new um, ag program um, and the farm, I think it would be behoove you to to have greater, greater voice from the business community. I think that it'll pay some great dividends. Currently, the county only has a an annual uh, advisory committee. Uh, by by law, they were required to have at least one annual meeting. Um, I'm not a big believer in an annual meeting. I think uh, more often actually begets uh, better programs. And so um, that's why that recommendation is there. I do think that there's an opportunity to align the to the labor market to, I mentioned the vintage culture, some of the advanced ag and construction programs. And there are a number of other opportunities uh, that could be explored um, as in the biosciences area and and others. Um, developing a work-based this learning system of support, the county has some staff that does provide some summer pension programs and some opportunities for teachers and and does a pretty good job of supporting, but I'm not sure it's systematic and is um, home-based as it could be. I do believe that um, including our CTE teachers and some of the district professional development um, would be a great, a great benefit, allowing those teachers to have a little more influence over what's happening on their own campuses. Um, and just being included, um, you know, under the supervision of of your principals and assistant principals, um, maybe included in part of the hiring and and uh, assessment and evaluation would be a great, uh, would be a great benefit to the district. Student recruitment and marketing, um, having students knowing maybe at an earlier age down in the elementary and middle school, there's lots of opportunities and great examples uh, that we've seen across the country where high schools and middle schools begin to work together and students come up for a day and visit, see programs and make informed choices about some of the courses they'd like to to pursue. Um, we also want to ensure that our counselors have that clear understanding of those course sequences. Uh, again, it varied from campus to campus. Um, some were very, very dedicated and understood the program very, very well, others um, maybe not as much and you know, vintage high school, uh, I I actually called them out for having some great uh, great model program for their counseling staff, and maybe that could be replicated in other campuses. Um, review that set the use and accessibility of the NAVYANCE compared to other options, there are a number of products out there um, that might even save the district some money. And research determined how best to provide some K career awareness and exploration. Many of our, the teachers reported that they didn't feel like the students had any awareness before they came into the program. And then using data to to drive those program improvements. So those are the sort of combinations, areas of concern and some recommendations overall. The next slide gets into some site-specific, um, and so for each campus, um, you'll see the programs on the next slide for each campus and kind of how they break out. And you'll see they're um, pretty even across the the three large comprehensive high schools, although vintage has a few more programs than the others. There is a variation across and and that, you know, some districts uh, will will create that variation and and provide some choice and offerings for students to choose the campus that has the program. Uh, other other school districts try to put the same programs at each campus. I'm not sure there's a a a perfect solution to that. But I do think uh, you've got facilities and equipment and investments, uh, you have to honor that, and so it is kind of what it is. But having, you know, strong programs and and making sure that each program is as high-tech as possible. So what I've tried to do in slides, the next slide is uh, specific to American Canyon High School and some of the things there. The uh, we were very impressed with the culinary hospitality management, that instructor's uh, student management system is something that should be replicated in other programs. The woodworking construction is up to date, um, but the county is struggling to find an instructor and so, you know, just wonder about, uh, is there other strategies for staffing? Other places to look for staffing? You have a biotech lab there that is, uh, was, I was just blown away by, and yet it hasn't been used, uh, or it's, you know, currently being used by by a chemistry teacher, I think, but it's not being used for, um, because the staffing has been a a challenge there. So I think that'd be a great opportunity to expand out to the vintage culture and ag sciences and the biotech side of those two areas. Um, we also discovered that, um, and I'm not sure this is, you know, across the board in each campus, but um, the American Canyon High School, we discovered that um, many seniors were getting getting off early. And not maybe not participating in a sixth period day, um, because they they'd finished all their credit requirements. Um, strengthening that's that senior year with an internship or dual enrollment or additional sequence offerings um, might might be in order um, for that campus and maybe the others. The education careers, career course is under-enrolled. And um, we didn't get to see that lab, some, you know, can't comment, that's the only lab I think we didn't see. I'm just wondering about, uh, um, there's some programs, some model programs for education and really uh, getting students exposed to elementary education with a STEAM focus uh, can be exciting and fun and and it's something that our elementary schools um, really need. Staffing, um, especially staffing with an eye on on the STEAM and STEM areas. Uh, the next slide, the specific to Vintage High School. And and again, accommodation to them is having the highest completer rate and certificate attainment dual enrollment. Uh, we should investigate those strategies they're using and see if we can duplicate those. The new ag uh, innovation center being planned provides an opportunity to align that program. Um, there are some programs in in Porterville, California that love to get some staff down and see and meet with their advisory board and and see how they put that together. It's a brand-new program. Um, and yeah, they use some strong workforce funding and and some um, uh, CT grants, uh, career technical education incentive grants to to improve their programs and could could be a model for you all to to take a peek at. Um, again, woodworking is not as well-equipped or up-to-date compared to the other programs. Um, and again, more focused on construction or construction management. Um, there is outdoor space for that, um, which could blend itself well. And then um, being an old auto guy coming from the auto industry and knowing the demands in the auto industry and how high-tech it is, um, we noticed that there's a closed automotive tech lab there with some pretty high-end equipment and um, two electric test vehicles that uh, were a pretty big investment and um, it'd be great to see if maybe there's a way to partner with local industry, maybe a community college, and maybe reopening it, providing some opportunities for students to explore that field. Um, students did say they wanted more CTE offerings and a couple of students did name up and they wish the auto program was still available. Uh, the next slide is specific to Napa High School. And again, woodworking is kind of a common theme across um, the robotics lab, um, though well-equipped, um, it was an old auto shop that had been closed for a number of trip hazards and um, just wondering about uh, how we might, you know, clean that program up and bring it up to the scale of some of the other programs. The advanced manufacturing facility was very well-equipped, um, but really out of space, and so, you know, if there were some grant opportunities to or, you know, potential future bond or whatever to to grow some space there. Uh, there is some outdoor space that that could be utilized for that, could be a great asset to to that school and to the program. And then the nursing program that was there, um, seemed very small and tight and what we weren't quite sure about the the curriculum that was underway, and so it might benefit from the the project lead-the-way biomedical sciences curriculum. It's a national curriculum, well-supported, well-trained, and um, it's it's kind of instructor-proof. As instructors come and go, it's a, it's a great program because uh, the next one can pick up and get trained and 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 step right in. Um, the next slide gets into to Napa, um, the New Technology High School. They do have a internship program, um, but it's not aligned uh, to the career and technical education program, and I think that's a great opportunity. Um, I do believe that we should be thinking about putting new technology into New Technology High School. Uh, there's a number of opportunities there, and you want to teach, recommended some of the computer information sciences programs. Um, so it could be a great opportunity. I know that there's plans underway to to go towards a middle college approach. Um, I still think that maybe there's some opportunities to partner with a community college or local industry to to get some new tech into there, uh, as you do that move. I visited Napa New Tech many, many years ago when when I was part of High Tech High and 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 in San Diego and the in implementation of that, and it was part of the Gates replication and as was uh, Napa New Tech. And, you know, I remembered the project-based learning approach and and asking and talking to the vice principal and principal, they said, yeah, it's something that kind of lost their way around that, would really like to regenerate that, so um, just put that in as, you know, strengthen the project-based learning approach, uh, it was the foundation of that of that school. Um, the last uh, of the schools, uh, um, is Valley Oak and um, um, the students really reported a high degree of personalized support there. I'm very impressed. We know that that is an alternative program and receives increased funding. Um, so, you know, may not be able to replicate across each of the campuses due to the the unique nature. Valley Oak has also taken advantage of the adult education programs. Wanted to ensure that those are articulated to Napa, Napa Valley College or any of the other colleges in in the region. You guys have a plethora of of community college opportunities uh, in and around your region, including Napa Valley College, and just want to be sure that those are aligned and articulated so that students are getting a certificate from there, that means something um, to towards then maybe a associate's degree or or even a four-year degree ultimately. Uh, we were surprised to to hear that, you know, students uh, um, love the the CTE course that they take, but um, um, they're not required to take the full sequence and um, you know, the staff reported that, you know, they're really there to help students gain their credits and and the you know, recover some of the credits they've lost over time. And um, to require a CTC, CTE sequence, so um, students may not buy into that, and I almost felt like maybe it's the the flip, we should require the CTE sequence and figure out a way to get the academic work out of it, so um, just just some thoughts, but uh, um, the next section here and and trying to go quickly, um, because I know our time is limited. Um, we we called out some short-term, some midterm and long-term actions. Um, so on the short term, re- redefining the partnership with with the Napa County Office of Ed, reading regularly, getting some budget detail, making sure that you guys are involved in all the grant opportunities uh, as a district um, and clear about the expectations of those, that the CTE staff are hired and supervised in conjunction with you all and professional development is planned and included with the district, not for the district. Um, and then applying for grants to improve programs to align with those labor market opportunities would be a great great thing for you all to do as a district, and and I know you're pursuing a few of those uh, as we speak. And then developing a strong advisory committee, uh, industry advisory committee, especially as it relates to your new program. And um, in phase three of our work, um, we have a number of opportunities to visit some other schools, and we have some model schools both here in California and and uh, across the country, love to to explore those with you as we pursue phase three. On the midterm side, um, uh, again, um, continuing to monitor the relationship with the county, establishing your own broad-based coalition and advisory board structure, which will lead to a system of work-based learning supports. Um, give you an opportunity then to expand and improve your offerings with their their involvement. And then you can begin to prioritize and update your programs um, based on those industry trends, because you'll have that direct industry involvement. And then I'm just want to emphasize the 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 need and and I think uh, the benefit if students were coming into the high school more aware and exploring their options, and so marketing and outreach plan. You don't need to spend a ton of money down there, you don't need to offer a lot of programming. It's just taking what you're currently doing and and aligning. And then looking at NAVYANCE, uh, making sure that it's the most effective tool. And then on the long-range, um, is uh, as we wrap up here in the last few slides is just increasing, you know, again, long, long range, if we can increase the offerings or at least align the offerings across grades nine through twelve, giving students an opportunity at each grade level to explore an interest and uh, pursue a a potential career. And then um, implementing, and we actually aligned this up and into phase two and three is just to consider implementing a college and career pathway approach, providing more hands-on experiences to students, integrating those academic and career and technical courses and being sure that each student has a work-based learning opportunity. And so we'll we'll pursue those uh, or at least explore those options in phases two and three of our work. But those will be some long-term. Um, slide thirty-four, um, the last one is the timeline, um, and it kind of outlines, if you were to think about this o- over time, the work that's kind of bunched up, uh, and then these first few months, and you'll see the red band there takes us up to today, um, where we're actually looking at the CTE report, which we finalized last week and submitted to you all. Um, we do have a couple of those experiential site visits coming up, North Kansas City and San Diego um, are both listed there and um, an opportunity to um, go into phase two, which would be for us to come back as a team and actually now talk with other teachers on campus, not just the CTE teachers, but other teachers on campus about their willingness to think about what is it that students need to know and be able to do, and how are we providing those experiences um, for those students in our classes, both academically and career and technical? And then see how the work-based learning could really fit in both to to the entire campus and support all students, not just the twenty-five percent that have elected into the career and technical uh, courses. So, um, with that, I'll conclude, um, and uh, answer any questions, but uh, just again, appreciate uh, the leadership of of Monica and uh, Lisa Faith, who's recently joined the district and under the supervision of of uh, uh, Patty Reddings, um, just appreciate working with all of you.
Thank you so much, Rob, and thank you for the opportunity to share this update. Connected has been an incredible partner, spending time in our classrooms with our teachers, with our students, and we look forward to continuing this journey with them as we start the next phases that he's outlined.
Okay, uh, before we take questions from the board, let me ask Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, we'll go to board discussion. Trustee Reiser.
Thanks, um, I had a couple of questions. I, um, um, in the presentation, it said that the pathway, that our our longest pathway, if I heard correctly, is two courses. But then I also heard in the presentation that that's the minimum to be considered a pathway. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. So two-course sequence is a minimum for the completer rate um, uh, for our college and career dashboard. Not all of our programs meet that, most of our programs do, as you heard, the one at Valley Oak does not currently.
So we have a lot of courses that are not part of a pathway, and then we have pathways, but the pathways that we offer are two-course pathways. Is that accurate?
So a two-course sequence is a pathway.
Sorry, a a two-course sequence, so the, so our pathways, do we have any pathways that are longer than two courses?
We do not currently. No, I'm with you. This has been my past ten weeks. Um, there are, there are um, no pathways that are currently longer than two courses. We have the minimum courses, yes.
So I was really interested, and this was so interesting, and I know this is sort of our launchpad for, you know, assessing and evaluating and look, looking at where we are. And there was so much integrity with the process, I really appreciated the partnership and and just the data collecting there. But it does highlight, I mean, we're hearing that the kids are asking for more. What would, like, a full path, like, what in a perfect world, in a fully-developed CTE program, what would those pathways entail? Would they be four courses so that somebody would take one every year of their four years? Is that sort of the like, what a full one would be?
You can have two-year. You can have two-year, three-year, four-year course pathways. And there are ways to have articulation or completion in connection with your college. And I think that's a great opportunity for us to explore. They can be integrated. So for example, UCCI, the University of California, has integrated pathways that integrate English and math and a connection with a particular CTE course at various levels. So there's multiple different models. I think that's why it's important for us to explore over these next steps. What works within our master schedules, what works when we consider declining enrollment? What works when we consider student interest in other programs and sustaining our current programming? And what opportunities do we have when we look at those other programs for integration to support students? One of the pieces of that that I think that Rob highlighted is that even our students that are completing, our completer rate is high. I just want to emphasize the intentionality around the college and career alignment. Our students may have a high completion rate, but those may not be the same success stories with college. And so we see what their UCADG completion rate. And so I think part of as we look at the pathways and the integration potentially of pathways is how do we ensure that students are both college and career ready? And leaving that door of opportunity open as long as possible to make the decisions.
Can I just add one, one comment to that? An example, a very concrete example of that is including an advanced placement course as one of the courses within a three-course sequence. Like those things can happen if we're, you know, getting that intentional and thinking about that integration.
And really honing it to be a full experience, yeah. And what was my other question was the industry certifications? Like are those, I guess what I'm looking for, what I'm wondering about with the certifications and then the pathways that as they exist within our system right now? Are, is there a lot of uptake on the certifications and the industry certifications? And do we have knowledge about kids? Like are they, are they enjoying the certification and then going off and never using it again? Or are we seeing connection? And I know I sort of didn't highlight this question ahead, but I'm sort of wondering about that certification piece and the pathways. And are they getting kids into careers?
Yeah. So currently in our programs, we do have industry certifications in certain areas. So for example, in medical biology, you might have a CPR and first aid certification. They may have that specific to pediatric CPR and first aid. In our culinary program, we have the food safety certification that students get. And so you can see in various pathways, construction, they have a certification oftentimes around safety, bloodborne pathogens, which I think we can all relate to after COVID, and Adobe certificates for some of our, some of our design in, at New Tech High School. So various pathways depending on it has an industry certification. We have about 700 students completing those. When they go to a career or they go to apply for a job, that they can list that industry certification. And so it's important. It is also like acknowledgement of a skill set, right? And so sometimes we have the grade that's acknowledged on a transcript. This is that career certification that provides that acknowledgement. And so I think it provides that, it provides that benefit. Could, you had one more question in there though, that I, I think I missed.
Yeah. I, I, let's see, what was it? Well, I guess I had another, what's highlighted from this also is just the student interest in wanting more. So I was, I also had interest in hearing what is done now, because I know this, what we're discussing now is sort of what we find out and what exists right now. Is there good, is there good, are, sorry, English teacher right next to me. Are there, are there good, appropriate channels for students to weigh in about their interests? Because one concern that I've raised here before is this sort of, and this was alluded to in the presentation too, of the, you know, part of the inequities from site to site. Some of them may be equipment, maybe one high school has better, you know, woodworking tools. But that really, some of the inequities that I think I heard alluded to were the sort of inequities of access because the schools offer such different classes. So it's kind of a two-parter question, but like how do kids know what's available to them if it's not available to them at their school? Number one, like how are we finding out what they might be interested in? Like maybe there's someone who has a head for business, but they don't go to a school that offers business. And then the other point that I just wanted to amplify was about the, with the declining enrollment and our, you know, shrinking resources and shrinking students and difficult labor, short labor market. We want to maintain as many programs as we can. And so I wanted to pick up on the comment about the scheduling and the looking for flexibility in scheduling. And I know this is planning and not now, but just to say that that might be a way to offer more options to more kids, you know, in the future, because that inequity has concerned me for a long time in terms of the access for kids at the, within the CTE. And it was really great to see the pockets of excellence that are happening. But the sense that I'm getting from the overview is that there, it's pockets of excellence, but that there's not continuity and that it's kind of fragmented. And so I really appreciate the, that we're looking at this as another area for improvement to help our kids, because I think that that's, that seems to be, you know, my takeaway from the presentation.
Yeah, I think the teaching and learning is strong. And so as you look at, I think what is being spoken to is as we look to more ownership and oversight of the programming, we start to look at the systems and structures that really allow for that teaching and learning and those opportunities to be open to students in a more equitable way with more opportunities. And so currently, we do not have a strong system for how we gather student interest. And I think that starts in the recommendation around the K-8. An interest in something starts with exploration and awareness. And so how are we developing that exploration and awareness? And then that leads into the interest. I think additionally, having our lens on industry and knowing what is viable in our community, not just now, but also three, five, 10 years from now, where is industry going? So that as we put courses in place, it will be in place for a extended period of time that those courses and the skills that they're learning and the knowledge that they're learning, even if that industry might shift a little bit, they're transferable. And so we could do a better job. I were currently, right now, it's student surveys. There's not currently a consistent process. And then as you can see, sometimes there's not consistent messaging. And so I think as we look to more ownership and oversight of that, it allows us to work across our campuses and with our staffs in those campuses and the various departments. Our counselors participated in this review and shared a wealth of knowledge. Our principals participated. And so we definitely have the interest and excitement around it. And now it's how do we, how do we look at the overall system to make some of those, make some of those shifts that we know will help touch on some of those inequities.
Yeah, thank you.
And I just want to comment to your, your question. I think it really speaks to the need to integrate our CTE programming within our larger offerings that we have. And one of the things that we look at is the staffing that we currently have in place. And part of the next steps is really assessing what credentials people have or have the ability to earn to be able to offer classes with the current staffing that we have as well. So in addition to the student surveys.
And then that piece of then having more continuity within our organization, that those staff people are part of our organization and our approach and our lens and might feel more part of, of our team.
Yes, it's definitely a very powerful opportunity for us to leverage the current CT teachers that we have and better integrate them into our overall programming. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Water.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Trustee Reiser, for bringing up a lot of, we were just sitting here looking at each other. I had no idea the CTE classes qualified for A through G. I didn't know that. And I'm a former high school teacher. How very ignorant of me. But I really appreciate the candor, you know, the recognition of what we need to do to improve. And that's, and we have, we've always talked about why does one school have so many CTE courses? You know, me and culinary arts, I always was sorry that wasn't at Napa High. And you know, what, how does this happen? How did this come to be? Why do we have differences? And I'm going to bring up something that has been on my mind forever. And that's the, that's the automobile program, the, the, okay, I saw your eyelids flutter, okay. But I attended meetings about that and I even came to the board meeting here where people were coming in yelling at the former, very upset with the former NVUSD when they closed auto shop and NVUSD kept saying, well, you know, that's an NCOE, that's an NCOE issue and you should go to that meeting. It was very confusing for the public. And yesterday, and a couple of weeks ago, my completely unscientific community outreach, I was standing in line at the Brown's Valley, you know, sandwich counter and a man who recognized me from one of the meetings. And he said, yes, I went up and gave my first speech in public at the county office. I thought it was just a great speech about why we needed auto shop and how I was hiring graduates immediately and giving them good jobs right out of high school. And I thought I gave a great speech and it didn't make any difference. They just went ahead and did what they did. And I said, oh gosh, that happens to me all the time. But he reminded me of it and it is, people, people bring it up all the time. And it does seem like it was a popular course. It seemed like a really popular course and fulfilled a community need. So you know, maybe it wasn't A through G. I have no idea what the reasoning was. But it is something that people still talk about. And I, I really like the presentation. It's, this is very thorough. As I said, it answered a lot of questions for me. I learned a lot. And I particularly like the focus on, you know, what we need to do to improve. So thank you for this. I know it was a lot of work, Monica. Excuse me. Excuse me. This is ready. Director ready.
Thank you.
Researcher.
Okay, trustee Chu.
So I had the pleasure of actually visiting all of the CTE classes at ACHS last year along with NCOE trustee Cindy Beederman. And we were very impressed with the quality of teaching that was there. And you know, when we think about teachers and staffing, we know there's a shortage right now. So I would love to offer everything to everybody. But if there's no staffing to teach these courses, like I hear that there has been very difficult. It, there's been difficulties, you know, filling the, the construction class at ACHS, at least from somebody I know, one of the students that's taking the class. So can you give us an overview, just so we're all aware? What are the credentials needed in order to be a CTE teacher? Because that kind of influences who might want to be a CTE teacher.
There are industry experience requirements. And so one of the, one of the opportunities that we have is there are potentials within our district to have staff who have industry experience that would qualify them to meet a CTE credential. And we haven't explored that yet. So a next step for us is looking at internally, what are some of those areas currently we, as far as recruitment goes? So they have to have a certain amount of hours, a certain amount of experience with the industry in order to get a particular CTE credential. I think it was shared in the report though, that we may not be exploring all means and looking to all avenues. For example, looking to labor partners, looking to industries. That, that point around industry advisories really touches multiple aspects, not just the teaching and learning. It can potentially, you know, connect to staffing and recruitment and connections. So we may have some internal and external opportunities as we look to industry qualifications for our CTE credentials.
It's also reminding me of our discussions about dual enrollment and how we can bring that onto our campuses. If only our teachers also had extra in their spare time to get a master's degree in their subject matter. And it's very much parallel to that. And I feel like there are a lot of opportunities. I think we can explore with partners to go that route and really internally, you know, develop some of that. Because if we're really looking to expand, we really should be serious about how are we going to staff that? Thank you very much for the presentation.
All right, student board member McGrath.
Yeah. I mean, first off, I just want to, you know, say that the, the CTE program is very impressive and I'm very happy that we have, you know, lots of opportunities for different pathways for high school students to explore. I guess, I guess my question for you is, you know, when we're at a point where, you know, the whole presentation, you know, the, the school is like, this school is this, this school doesn't. What, what does it look like for our district to move towards more equal learning and a variety of pathways available to more students? I know that's a very broad question, but like, we keep saying we need to, but like, what steps need to be taken to actually achieve that?
Yeah. So I think there are some initial steps that we have available to us in specific areas. And so those are the biomedical, the medical facility, the medical lab at American Canyon High School. It's a facility that's available. And so looking at how do we staff that? And then what is the pathway that could align to that? Something that expanded my thinking on these tours was, I think medicine when I see that or I think that particular pathway. And yet there are expansion of using labs for viticulture or other industries. And so looking at what are the key industries that align in that particular area? And what's our student interest? And then making, making some decisions. At Napa High School, we currently have a grant to support their manufacturing. And so looking at their outside space and seeing how can we move in that direction? We have student interest in welding and advanced and in improving our advanced manufacturing. It's a really strong, excellent facility with the teacher that's in there. And so how can we grow that, given the space that we have? And then at Vintage High School, our ag science innovation. So there are some immediate, and we, on the board agenda tonight, there is a, a grant that we submitted to look at that particular facility. And I think throughout all of them, look at the tech. So you'll see in that particular grant that Apple has invited us to participate in trying some ag technology. And we see that that maybe is a future of CT that's not currently a pathway that we get to explore. So those are immediate next steps. I think as we look to overall visioning and programming, we need to go out and see other sites. And so that's a part of phase two. And then do kind of a needs assessment and audit of our master schedules and look at how do we, how do we either, what is our next step? Is it integration? Is it staying with our current pathways? And then how do we expand within that? Looking at where students have more space in their schedule to take some of those. And also looking at the systems that, you know, with counselors and scheduling, how do those, how do those work? So I think we have some very strategic next steps in a couple of key areas, but we're still in that process of really visioning, going out and seeing others and then doing kind of an assessment of what, what do we have the capacity to do to meet the needs of our students entering industry and also their interests.
Thank you.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I know you guys have PD day tomorrow, so I will be very fast. It will. I know Connect, this is kind of big picture, so it's more of a comment. You know, Connect Ed was hired because they have the knowledge and established criteria to, as they say, challenge the status quo. And I do not question their expertise. Short, medium and long-term actions are appropriate based on the data collected and allows for a timeline to construct the best programming for our students. I appreciate the collaboration that has occurred over the decades. And I know that NCOE will value Connect Ed's assessment as they too want, want what is best for students. It is incumbent upon us to assess and continually improve programming. Supporting college and career readiness is a critical piece of our strategic focus. And this data collection allows us to make informed decisions and to recognize the right growth opportunities for our students. But I do have one observation. And while it is not program-related, it is adjacent. In the Strategic Consultation for Schools Special Education Report, they found financial efficiencies, inefficiencies by NCOE. In the Short Term Action Section of this Connect Ed Assessment, there is a request for budget details to be provided with fiscal clarity. There are current, current issues outside of the aforementioned that also beg the question, does NCOE understand financial efficiencies within the context of programming and sustainability? NCOE exhibits a high level of competency in understanding the financials, ADA revenue generation, declining enrollment and cash reserves. But I'm beginning to question whether these fundamentals are considered within a programmatic context. I'm beginning to question whether these fundamentals are considered within a programmatic context and if impact is being duly considered. Districts need maximum financial resources, and NCOE's primary role is fiscal oversight services to our district. Fiscal oversight cannot be so narrow, and the big picture must be considered going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a couple of comments. College and career readiness, that's a phrase that I felt has been very one-sided in this district in the past. I appreciate this deep dive on our CTE programs and the opportunity to finally begin to make that career part of the phrase start to matter a little bit more and hopefully become a co-equal partner with the college readiness. I appreciate the timeliness of the effort to refine and potentially grow the programs as the state also is focusing on this area. It seems like these CTE pathways offer us a real area of growth, and I'm glad we're spending time to examine this space. I want to echo the concerns around Naviance brought forward in the findings here and the need to review the effectiveness and the use and implementation of the tool. I hope that we take to heart the lack of consistent implementation and explore the possibility thoroughly of replacing the program with something that we can implement with fidelity district-wide. I'm not convinced Naviance is the answer. As even the location where it's supposedly the best implementation in our district, the use seems to be nonexistent. So, I don't think we're getting our money's worth out of this program. I look forward to hearing more about the new Ag Innovation Center at Vintage High School, and I hope as we are making these plans for potentially implementation of Phase Three in 2025, that we're really taking into account our declining enrollment. As by 2028, we're projected to lose 2,000 students. So, that's significant in our planning, and we need to take into consideration. That's all I have. So, we're well past time. We will take our break now. All right, and we are back. We're now on to Item K, Action Items. K1, General Services. K1A, Contract with SmartSocial.com.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Reiser, second by Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
All right. We're now on to K2, Business Services. K2A, AB 1200/2756 for NVEA, NAPS, Management, Confidential, and CSEA.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Do we have discussion from trustees on this item? Trustee Chu?
So, I have a -- I just want to appreciate all the teachers and management staff, principals, because it has been a tough few years, and anytime we can show appreciation to them, I'm all for it. Thank goodness for them, because we know pandemic really hurt our kids and their ability to learn to their potential. And the kids are catching up because now they're back in the classroom with their teachers. And that takes a lot of work for the teachers to get them up, not only to learn at the pace they're there now, but to really catch them up in the long run and to really catch up that year of most of our kids not learning in the classroom. So, thank you all so much for all the hard work.
I think, to be respectful of time, I think we all prepared comments, but everybody on the board wants to express their gratitude, their appreciation, and their thanks for our faculty and--
And staff, all the support staff also, because nothing runs without everybody.
Increased compensation is one way of communicating the importance of your job, and we want you to know we acknowledge the importance of your work.
I just wanted to really highlight how deserving our NVA, NAPS, Management, and CSEA employees are of this 8% raise and 2% off scheduled salary. They're very deserving, and I wanted to highlight all the hard work they do for our district. We couldn't effectively educate our students if it wasn't for our wonderful employees. It's so important in today's labor market to offer competitive wages to be able to attract quality employees.
You're here.
All right. With that, it looks like discussion is done. So, Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K2B, Agreement with Team Civics?
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K3, Human Resources. K3A, Memorandum of Understanding Salary Increase for Physical Year 23-24.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 3B, Amendment to Employee Agreements for Executive Cabinet.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, a second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Board discussion?
In response to those-- In response to those that feel our superintendent and executive team have not earned a cost of living raise, the district might be considered a micro-cap company, less than a low range of a small cap and at the higher end of the micro-cap. Compensation is normally determined by the market. There's not necessarily a cap on what a CEO in the private sector makes can earn. But we are in the public sector, and currently, due to the complexity of the job, the tenure of superintendents has decreased dramatically. It used to be five to six years. Now, it's around two to three. Retention, especially in today's staffing market, is critical. Dr. Masetti's compensation is in the exact range of her counterparts in similarly-sized districts. That is public information. Our county superintendent is also in that range. That, too, is public information. A minor number but elevated voices have expressed displeasure with the performance of the district and feel that an increase in compensation implies that we don't understand your concerns. We do. We have work to do, and we are doing it. Foundational work has been done, and we are focused on literacy, math, and solid fundamentals. It takes a strong leader and team with a vision to get that accomplished. I share the frustration that change often occurs slowly and that moving the needle across learning content is not immediate, even when there is intense focus on our achievement. We are in the business of education, and there is more than one metric that determines achievement. We are committed to them all. Every child deserves that. Good leadership matters. An executive team must be capable of making transformational decisions, and the process is complex. Positive outcomes are determined by how our leaders pursue those objectives. I believe this team is doing the work to sustainably improve achievement and the educational experience. Creating an educational environment in condition that best serves students is our responsibility. And as stated, there's work to be done. And I know we have the right people to do so. I would like to keep them. I support this item.
Anyone else?
I echo those sentiments.
What she said.
I did want to weigh in on this as well. I think that Dr. Masetti and her executive team are doing a great job and are deserving of this 8% raise and 2% off-schedule payment. She and her team have done great work for the district over the past year. Each year, the board lays out a group of annual priorities, which the executive team then executes on. This past year, the board evaluated their progress on those priorities and found their work on those priorities to be exemplary. Considering that great work, I see no reason to deny them the opportunity to participate in the me-too nature of compensation increases enjoyed by the rest of district employees. I wanted to take this moment to thank Dr. Masetti and her team for all their hard work. It feels like the appropriate time to make sure that they know we recognize their hard work and appreciate their dedication to the district. So, thank you. And then, I think we can move to voting. So, Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you, trustees. We appreciate your support and affirmation.
All right. K4, Instructional Services. K4A, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution Certifying Compliance with the Education Code 60119 and Education Code 60422. So, before we make a motion, we're going to start our public hearing. I am now opening the public hearing. There's no one in the boardroom. Ms. Green, is there any public comment at our public hearing on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
I will now close our public hearing. Now that the public hearing is closed, can I get a motion on this item?
I will move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, a second by Trustee Reiser. As this is a resolution, Ms. Morales, can I please get a roll call vote?
Yes. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. All right. On to 4B, Adoption of Career Technical Education Program Review Report Findings.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4C, Napa County Career Technical Education Incentive Grant, or CTIG Consortium for the Napa Valley Unified School District.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4D, K12 Strong Workforce Program Round Six.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4E, Memorandum of Understanding with Liberty University for Counseling Intern.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4F, Memorandum of Understanding with California State University East Bay.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4G, Agreement with the Chardonnay Golf Club.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Board discussion? Seeing none. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4H, Agreement with Via Corona Catering.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4I, Agreement with Ellis Flooring.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4J, Agreement with Burlington English.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4K, Appointment of Napa Valley Unified School District Representatives to the Napa Valley Adult Education Consortium Board of Directors.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K4I, Contract with Manhattan Concert Productions.
Move to approve?
Enthusiastic. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, an enthusiastic second by Trustee Reiser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right. That moves us on to Item L, which is informational. Item L1, General Services. Item L1A, which is the Curriculum and Student Support Committee. The committee has not met. L1B, that's Facilities and Technology. There is a report attached. Is there any discussion? Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Moving on to LC, Finance Committee, has not met. L1D, that's the Policy Committee, also has not met. We'll now move on to Item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Trustee Water?
Yeah, I have a brief comment. Last night, I went to the synagogue for the community vigil to mark the attacks by Hamas, the terrorist group. One of our school parents spoke. She had lost two family members in Israel last week. Completely tragic. And over the past few months, we have deplored the rise of antisemitism in our area. We have Muslim as well as Jewish children in our schools. And I just want to say, let's not let a rogue terrorist group frighten us, divide us, lure us into Islamophobia. Thank you.
Oop, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item N, Future Agenda Items. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item O, Adjournment. I move to adjourn. First by myself, second by Trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned at 9:45.